Regular meeting number 10 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. President Pro Tem, would you please leave us in the pledge?
I declare allegiance to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased and appreciative to have our Bishop Ezekiah Martin, Senior Pastor of Southfield Missionary Baptist Church, to pray with us this evening. Pastor, thank you for being here.
Gracious God, we are thankful that you allowed us to be on the roll call to wake up this morning. We're thankful for life, health, and strength. We're thankful for the many blessings that you have bestowed on us. Tonight, God, in your infinite wisdom, it is our prayer that you will give guidance in this room, that you will touch these leaders that you have called and appointed for such a time as this, that you will continue to bless them, continue to cover them as well as their families, as they lead our city into another place. Thank you, God, for this opportunity that you have given us to go higher in you. And we ask, God, that your presence will show up in this place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed in the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions from member of council? I just knew that there wasn't, so. Are there any comments by our elected officials?
Councilmember Brown, I do want to do an introduction, if I may.
Please.
I would like to introduce Dr. Rob Lowe.
Yes, please.
I'd ask Dr. Lowe to please come down to the podium. This evening, Dr. Rob Lowe is our new Medical Director for the Division of Fire. Dr. Lowe is a board certified in emergency medicine from the American Board of Emergency Medicine, and Dr. Lowe assumed the responsibilities of Dr. David Kessick, who retired last summer. And I would like to ask Dr. Lowe at least to spend a few minutes and educate my colleagues about your background, sir, and what you plan to do for the City of Columbus Fire Division.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. President Harden. I do have a background in emergency medicine, and specifically in EMS. And EMS is being my fun in medicine, and so it's with great pleasure that I take on this responsibility. Columbus has a long standing tradition, and it's an honor to be associated with a department that has some 200 years of some very innovative things. We were doing EMS and rescue squads some 40 years before EMS was defined through the Heart Mobile. And then today, we're doing some very unique things with React, with some of our cardiac arrest, and with our AED programs with Columbus Police, and our mobile stroke, just a number of things. So I'm excited to be a part of that. Part of my goal for the division is to build upon those processes and those improvements over time. My other aspect of enjoyment in EMS is I do enjoy still taking care of patients and being in the field. And so I've had the opportunity to spend some time in the field, and that'll be part of my medical direction. And we were just chatting today about a particular gratifying case where we recently ran with Columbus Police, Columbus Fire, in a township that resulted in Columbus Police being first on the scene and the successful use of an AED multiple times. And so being able to get out in the field and see those things and build on those is just part of the vision we have for delivering the right care to the right people in the right amount of time and in the right place. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to it.
Any comments for Dr. Lowe?
Welcome.
It's one of the interesting things, I had a chance to spend a little bit of time with him, and I know, again, for always to have a greater appreciation for what actually happens in the pre-hospital care environment. And his involvement on the scene, not just, you know, getting information, he was actually out riding with the firefighters and the paramedics in the performance of duty. So something to look forward to, and welcome aboard to the City of Columbus Fire Division, sir. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. I did get ahead of myself. Are there any comments that councilmembers have? Seeing none, all right. Elected officials. Want to recognize our former councilmember Judge Paley's in the chamber this evening. Is that Judge Hummer? Judge, how are you? Any comments now, or?
I just want to thank... It's been a while. City Council and City Hall for all of the support that we got in the budget this year. And we also would like to thank React because we are seeing a lot of their good deeds in City Hall. And with the extended care of the courthouse, we are seeing a lot of great things happening and a lot of great programs beginning. So thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Are there any requests by members of council for removal of any ordinance or resolution from consent portion of action of the portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for a first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance is 363, 377, 382, 390, and 447-2020. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 342-2020. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 283-2020. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 187, 215, 216, 217, 222, 237, 247, 249, 252, 253, 257, 258, 259, 260, 262, 265, 274, 280, 284, 307, 322, 329, 331, 378, and 395-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 422 and 448-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 353-2020. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 416, 417, 418, 419, 436, 442, and 443-2020. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 458, 459, and 488-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 46x47, 42, 43, 44, and 45x-2020. Finance Committee, ordinance is 227, 279, 324, 328, 334, 340, 346, 355, 359, 375, 376, 393, 400, 446, 450, 457, and 470-2020. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 50, 361, 369, 426, and 435-2020. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 373, 374, 381, 398, 409, 429, 431-2020. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 3002-2019, and ordinances 214, 233, 314, and 360-2020. Technology Committee, ordinance 387-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 299, 323, 341, 380, and 410-2020. Housing Committee, ordinance is 366 and 402-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 321, 350, 352, and 415-2020. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 420-2020. Administration Committee, ordinance is 404 and 440-2020. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 276, 325, 354, 394-2020, and Appointments from Mayor's Office numbered A0031-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. Ms. Mathania Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 0366 in the Housing Committee.
Once again, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Mathania George Wilkins, as the resident of the North London area. I'm speaking in 0366, 2020, 2020. 1071 Rosewood Avenue, holding the land bank. To my knowledge here, I believe this probably was a two-bedroom, one-bath, and I believe it was torn down, I believe, in 2010. And my concerns are, the property sits idleized for several years. And I know it was purchased back in 1993 for zero amount of dollars, and I know the city must have took it over. But this no longer sits like this. And my knowledge is, when I pulled up the Franklin County Auto's website, and here again, we are losing a lot of history. Property that's small like this was, I think, square footage was like 784. And today, as I pull up on the Franklin County Auto's website, it looks like this. Now, I'm not for this or against this, but what I need to know, what was the timeline when this property got demolished in 2010? And what was wrong with the property? Because my knowledge to see a house that's boarded up and vacant for a short period of time, you know, we always talk about affordable housing, and we also talk about low-income housing for these people that's getting out of prison and things. So now that I'm looking at this area, you know, this was a promised community at one time or another. You know, if we're going to start looking at this demo and stuff, we want to start looking at fixing, rehabbing these homes. But I'm not against for low-income housing in that empty lot, and I'm not for building a house that's going to be high market rate for somebody cannot afford. So again, I just need documentation, whoever that may be. But I'm not looking for any habitat housing in that area. I'm looking for the same architect, the structure, and wise of that neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director, just, is this, to bring clarity, is this just what their title says, an amendment to the ordinance and change in the name of a previous passed ordinance, or?
That's correct.
Okay. If there is any additional information that we can get, Mr. Wilkins, about previous conveyance, would you please provide that and make sure that council is made aware that information being shared? Are there any other questions or concerns about the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I have a motion for approval of these items as needed as consent. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Consent agenda items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That is chaired by President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown, Councilmember de Flores Jures.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we are starting with ordinance 0364-2020 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into four universal term contracts for the option to purchase electric conductors, wire, and cable with American Wire Group, Consolidated Electrical Distributors Incorporated, Utility Supply and Construction Company, doing business as power line supply, and Wesco Distribution Incorporated, to authorize the expenditure of $4 from the General Budget Reservation, BRPO 001107, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code, and to declare an emergency. The term of the proposed option contracts would expire March 31st, 2021, with the option to renew for three additional years. The total estimated annual expenditure is $250,000, and the Division of Power is the primary user. Emergency action is being considered due to the expiration of the current contracts and the desire to avoid delays in procuring these materials. Director Lombardi, can you shed light on the waiving of competitive bidding?
Sure. Thanks, President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, other members of council. All four bidders, there is a worksheet in all of our bid documents, and all four bidders had done something incorrectly on each one of those worksheets. Those worksheets do not affect in any way, shape, or form for our ability to evaluate into award or for any monetary proposals that they've given. So the reason why we're waiving is all four of them had some type of mistake or not completed the worksheet, and we are awarding to all the lowest responsible bidders for each item.
Thank you, Director. Any further questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 0439-2020 to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish a purchase order from a previously established UTC with statewide Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the purchase of pursuit and response vehicles for the Police and Fire Divisions, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $2,496,729.96 from the Special Income Tax Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is for the purchase of 59 pursuit SUVs and five K-9 vehicles for the Division of Police, as well as three K-9 vehicles for the Division of Fire. The Department of Finance and Management budgeted $9 million in the Special Income Tax Fund for 2020 citywide vehicle acquisitions. Emergency action is being considered to ensure that these vehicles can be purchased prior to the manufacturer's order cutoff date of April 2nd, 2020. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
That is all I have in Finance. May I move to Recreation and Parks?
Please.
We have ordinance 0351-2020 to authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract for hosted software maintenance and support of the Active Net software application with Active Network LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $170,000 from the Recreation and Parks Department Operating Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. The Active Net software application assists with the automation of the department's business and management operations. The system provides around-the-clock access for citizens to register for activities and facility rentals via the Internet. It creates the ID cards used at recreation facilities and events, and provides the ability to accurately audit revenues collected by the department, amongst other services. This ordinance will authorize the first year of a two-year renewal term with Active Network LLC. Emergency action is being considered so that the services provided are not interrupted. Director Rakowski, can you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding?
President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, and members of council, we've been using this system for years now. There's very few of these registration software systems that are available out there. This is the best one, and there's really no compelling reason at this point for us to move on to another system, so that's why we're asking for the waiver.
Great. Thank you, Director. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
That is all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Brown, Mitch Brown, Councilmember de Flores Jures.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I would like to ask Fire Chief O'Connor to please make his way to the podium. Tonight, I have 0389-2020 to authorize the Public Safety Director to accept U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's overdose data to action program funding via subaward from the Franklin County Public Health in the amount of $371,523 for year-one project expenses related to a three-year project, to appropriate award funds to Columbus Public Safety for expansion of Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, better known as React Outreach Activity, to authorize the appropriation, again, of $371,523 from the unappropriated balance of the General Government Grants Fund 2220, and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Chief O'Connor to give a brief understanding, or a brief history, if you will, of the React team. Chief?
What this grant will do is allow the Division of Fire, in cooperation with the Division of Police, Columbus Public Health, and other agencies, to put a third React team in service. This third React team is going to be focused more at the county level with a lot of our partners. One of the issues that we have found is a lot of the people who are customers of this React program and people that we can help are transient, and sometimes they're moving out of our jurisdiction. This will allow our funding to allow us to reach out to them. In addition to that, Primary One has agreed to partner with us on this and to provide additional health and counseling services for these clients once they are entered into the system, and we're able to offer some opportunities. The whole point of React is to top treating the symptom and treat the cause, and to get the person treatment, which is what will hopefully end their life of opiate addiction and move on to more productive life and happier life.
Chief, the React vehicle is comprised of whom, in the sense of the team that they have?
It's a three, each React team is a, it's a three-person cooperative. There is a Division of Fire Paramedic, there is a Columbus Police Officer, and there was someone from the social service agencies that work together. So what happens is, is every one of them brings special skill sets to the table and allows them to help the client the most, whatever they need, whether it's from housing to medical care, to whatever avenues they need.
And do you have any idea what the numbers were from when we first started with React?
I don't have those right here with me. I can get those for you, but I don't have them here with me.
I'd appreciate it. Any questions from my colleagues?
No.
Seeing or hearing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have in Public Safety. May I move on to Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee. I would also like to ask Ms. Katie White and Ms. Christine Happel to please approach the podium. I have 0503-2020 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Greater Columbus Network of Villages in support of outdoor home maintenance for older adults, to authorize an appropriation expenditure of $8,000 within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, and to declare an emergency. Ladies, you have the microphone. Please state your full name and what organization you represent.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Harden and members of Columbus City Council. My name is Katie White, Director of Age-Friendly Columbus and Franklin County. We are a program of Ohio State College of Social Work that gathers information from older adults and individuals of varying abilities across central Ohio in an effort to understand challenges in mobility, housing, employment, and beyond. Through robust, community-based participatory research and planning, we collect and analyze data, secure funding, implement pilot projects, and evaluate impact. With each new challenge that we hear about comes an opportunity for engaging elders and making community improvements that benefit individuals of all ages and abilities. We pride ourselves on creating people-led innovations through community-based partnerships. One such partnership is with the Greater Columbus Network of Villages. Through a strong collaboration, we have launched multiple pilot projects with the villages over the last four and a half years. In the last 12 months, we have helped grow the number of villages, launched free neighborhood circulators, designed and implemented a program with LIFT, and created a standardized evaluation and reporting system for measuring the impact of villages. It is my pleasure to stand next to the Network Director, Christine Happel, this evening, and in the audience with Phoebe Alabac and Marie Reinhold, to celebrate yet another pilot program, and to thank each of you of Columbus City Council for your continued support and innovation in aging.
Again, thank you, Council President Harden and members of City Council for having us here today. I am Christine Happel. I'm the Director of Villages in the Ville and the Greater Columbus Network of Villages. Home maintenance poses a challenge for older adults aging in community. According to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission's 2017 Age-Friendly Columbus Report, 30% of surveyed older adults indicated no or I'm not sure when asked if they agreed that they are able to maintain the outside of their home. Outdoor repairs and maintenance may extend beyond an older adult's fixed income and jeopardize an individual's ability to remain at home. Village services and supports are targeted to generate lasting economic stability so older adults are able to age in community as they wish. Outdoor home maintenance services are completed by volunteers, village directors, and when capable volunteers are not available, vetted service providers. The ability to maintain a safe, secure, and well-cared-for home determines one's abilities to remain at home as they age. In 2019, Ville on the Hill provided volunteer outdoor home maintenance services such as leaf raking, mowing, and hedge trimming. One member had been cited by City Code enforcement because her bushes had grown over to cover the access to her front door. Volunteers were able to clear a path to the door so that the older adult could avoid further citations. After several failed attempts with contractors, and a home-by-high member who lives in Milo Grogan utilized a referral to replace the entirety of her home sighting, preventing further costly damage to her home. Through these funds, we plan to continue these services. We want Columbus to be a model for the community to show the impact of collaborative, neighborhood-based services can have in keeping older adults in the homes and neighborhoods they love. We look forward to continued conversations to determine ways we can continue to serve our older adults, and we are thankful for our ongoing support of Age-Friendly Columbus and Franklin County, the Franklin County Office on Aging, Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, our members, volunteers, community partners, and certainly the City of Columbus. It really does take a village. For more information, I, Christine Happel, can be reached at the Clintonville Beachwell Community Resources Center, and the phone is 614-268-3539. Thank you all so much.
Any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Remi?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brown, for your leadership on this. Thanks, Katie and Christine. I appreciate all the work that you've done and you continue to do for our senior citizens. We know that it's important, it's for providing safe and stable housing for seniors is paramount for them to be able to age in place. So appreciate your efforts, and certainly am very supportive of this piece of legislation. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, they won't say it, but I will. Aging is so cool, everybody's doing it. So with that, I move for passage.
Yes.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Doran, Councilmember de Flores Jures.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance number 0127-2020 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of rental of construction equipment with an operator for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,710,000 from the Sewer Operating Fund and $150,000 from the Water Operating Fund. This agreement will allow the department to rent equipment with an equipment operator to conduct work on various projects within the department beyond the scope of city-owned equipment. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 0129-2020 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the current contract to obtain capacity and energy for the Division of Power in accordance with terms and conditions of the contract with AEP Energy Partners, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $48,500,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This contract with AEP Energy Partners, Inc., will enable the Division of Power to continue to service its 14,000 customers and maintain 55,000 streetlights in the city of Columbus and central Ohio. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 0163-2020 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water, to authorize the expenditure of $13,300,000 from the Water Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. The chemicals acquired through this purchase are critical to the Department of Public Utilities' treatment process to ensure the water in its customers' homes meets all the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, remit, President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, I have ordinance number 0286-2020 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the current contract to obtain capacity and energy for the Division to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with MI Homes of Central Ohio LLC for the Hoover Farms Substrunk Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to the Division of Sewer and Drainage, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer within an expenditure of $3,690,440 from the sanitary general obligation bond fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance enables MI Homes of Central Ohio LLC to obtain reimbursement from the city through the Department of Public Utilities for construction services. The developer will extend sanitary sewer service northwest from Lee Road towards East Walnut Street, allowing for further development within this corridor. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in public service, we have ordinance number 0413-2020 to authorize the Director of Public Service on behalf of the city of Columbus to prepare and submit a Safe Routes to School application to the Ohio Department of Transportation to accept and expend grant funds, if awarded, to issue refunds if necessary after final accounting is performed and to declare an emergency. Safe Routes to School funds are available to communities as grants to be used to improve the ability of elementary and middle school students to walk and bicycle to school safely. A community may be awarded up to $400,000 for an infrastructure project. The Department of Public Services' application will focus on constructing new sidewalks and filling existing sidewalk gaps on Gray Street from Oriole Avenue to Eureka Avenue. The Columbus City Schools District-wide travel plan identified Gray Street as a priority corridor for West Broad Elementary School. Walking is a significant mode at West Broad Elementary School with approximately 35% of students walking to school. Director Gallagher, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Council President Harden, Council Chair Favor, and other members of council. The Ohio Department of Transportation accepts applications each March for Safe Routes to School funding. Each successfully funded project is capped at winning $400,000, as you stated. The winning applications are based on whether the project is on a school travel plan, the percentage of students that live and walk within a two-mile radius of the school, and the safety around the school, the number of crashes that are occurring. Awardees are notified in June, whether they won or not, so we'll know in several months. And the total amount statewide that is available is approximately $4 million. And as you stated, we are going for $400,000 towards Gray Street. The estimated cost of our Gray Street sidewalk project, including engineering right away in construction, is currently estimated at $2.3 million, so $400,000 will come in quite handy, and the project is currently in design. We've been successful in our last two attempts at getting Safe Routes to School funding. We were awarded $382,000 in 2018 for the Kingsford Road sidewalk project and $400,000 in 2019 for the Ann Street and 17th Street sidewalk project. So hopefully, we will be able to win for the third year in a row, and we appreciate City Council considering this request. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have in public service. May I move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary?
Please.
I have 0356-2020 to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit, captioned Carla Hoover et al. versus Stephen G. Rosser et al., United States District Court case number 219CV01453, to authorize the transfer of $185,000 between divisions within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $185,000 in settlement of the lawsuit, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Chief Counsel Laura Baker-Morse with the City Attorney's Office to provide additional details around the settlement.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. In the matter of ordinance 0356-2020, I request on behalf of City Attorney Klein, the council authorized the City Attorney's Office to settle the lawsuit, captioned Carla Hoover et al. versus Stephen G. Rosser, for the amount of $185,000. The Department of Public Safety has approved this request. Carla Hoover, Emily Howden-Schield, Brittany Yates, Danielle Calderon, Ashley Graves, and Chelsea Paige Ewart, collectively referred to as the plaintiffs, were all dancers at the former Kahoots Gentlemans Club. Plaintiffs were each charged by former Columbus Police Vice Officers Stephen Rosser and Whitney Lancaster with violating Ohio Revised Code 2907.40(c)(2) illegal-oriented activity in sexually-oriented businesses. That code section states in relevant part that no employee who regularly appears nude or semi-nude on the premises of a sexually-oriented business while on the premises of that sexually-oriented business and while nude or semi-nude shall knowingly touch a patron. The plaintiffs in this case have alleged that Rossers and Lancaster falsely swore out criminal complaints against them in retaliation for their employer's desire not to retain a certain security guard. Rosser and Lancaster were recently fired by the city due to their involvement in the arrest of Stephanie Clifford. The plaintiff's lawsuit names Rosser, Lancaster, and the city as defendants. The plaintiffs allege that they were charged without probable cause in violation of their Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. The city was required to hire outside counsel to represent the officers in this case. If the case proceeded to trial and if liability would have been established at that trial, the city would have been responsible for paying plaintiff's attorney's fees in addition to any jury award the plaintiffs may have received. This settlement allows the city to avoid these risks and the expected significant litigation costs. The funds to pay for this settlement will come from the general fund account, and the settlement will release the city and officers Lancaster and Rosser from any and all claims arising out of this incident.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. Director Stewart, do you mind providing us with any additional updates from the public safety's concern or respect?
President Harden, Councilmember Favor, other members of council, as council indicated before, on January 23rd, acting of this year, acting on the recommendation of Police Chief Quinlan, Safety Director Dr. Pettis terminated Steve Rosser and Whitney Lancaster's employment with the Division of Police.
Thank you for that update. Just briefly, could you provide us with a general idea of any changes to our current training program or process, or any new programs or protocols that may have been implemented to ensure this situation doesn't happen again?
Yes, ma'am. As a result of this and other issues, the Police Department has engaged in a PACT. PACT is Police and Community Together. PACT takes a comprehensive approach to trafficking and prostitution that address both supply and demand. Police Department communicates directly with citizens in affected areas and provides community debrief after an operation to ensure continued transparency. All officers receive intense two-day training, which includes information of services, addiction services, catch court programming, how to identify trafficking victims, and a focus on treating women and others with respect. Officers receive continued training to enforce these goals. PACT operations are heavily supervised. No operations occur without an onsite supervisor. All warrants or all arrests are made by uniformed officers. The Division of Police will engage women and victims with services at the time of the arrest and throughout the process with a goal of breaking the cycle of prostitution. We have already identified traffickers and have women engaged in programming as a result of this new approach. The Division of Police has made between 50 and 60 arrests of buyers and sellers each month since September of 2019. And then finally, the Division of Police will work closely with nonprofit organizations such as the Salvation Army, She Has No Name, and Out of the Darkness, also to assist these victims.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance number 456-2020 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the special income tax to the Development taxable bond fund, to authorize the expenditure of $13 million from the Development taxable bond fund to the Confluence Community Authority and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the appropriation expenditure of $13 million pursuant to the contribution agreement with the Confluence Community Authority, which was authorized by ordinance 1858-2019 and improved by Columbus City Council on July 22nd, 2019. I'd like to ask the Deputy Director Rory McGinnis to speak a little bit further on this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council. This ordinance authorizes the first of three annual payments to the Confluence Community Authority. Pursuant to the contribution agreement passed in July of 2019, the city committed to contribute funds in the amount of $38 million to the authority on the following timeline. March 1st, 2020, in the amount of $13 million, no later than March 1st, 2021, in the amount of $12.5 million, and not later than March 1st, 2022, in the amount of $12.5 million. Eligible projects for expenditure include, but are not limited to, development on the current Mafre Stadium site, which will include a new training facility and community sports park. Costs directly associated with the construction of the new downtown stadium are not eligible. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions this evening? Seeing none, thank you very much, Deputy Director McGinnis. Seeing no further questions, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed. That's all I have in economic development this evening. With your permission, I'll move on to environment. Please. Next, I have ordinance 245-2020 to authorize the expenditure of $17,128,000 or so, much thereof, as may be necessary from the special income tax fund, to pay 2020 waste disposal tipping fees for the Division of Refuge Collection, to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish an encumbrance of $17,53,000 to pay refuse tipping fees to the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for the Division of Refuge Collection pursuant to an existing lease agreement, to establish encumbrances up to $25,000 for tire disposal and construction demolition material disposal, to establish an encumbrance up to $50,000 for radiation remediation services, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to establish an encumbrance within the special income tax fund to pay 2020 waste disposal fees for the Division of Refuge Collection and to expend funds to pay the tipping fees. This expense is necessary to safely and contractually dispose of the waste collected by the Division in the course of pursuing its mission by providing residential refuge collection services to over 320,000 households weekly, picking up bulk items and illegally dumped items as needed, and to provide radiation remediation services to process quarantine loads at Suaco tipping sites. The Department of Public Service has determined that $17,128,000 should be adequate for this purpose. This number is based upon an estimated waste stream of 319,000 tons in 2020. Actual tonnage is ultimately dependent on variables such as the weather, the actual number of households collected that cannot be specifically calculated at this time, and the unknown amount of bulk and illegally dumped items. If necessary, additional legislation will be submitted to increase funds at a later date. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed. Next, I have ordinance number 344-2020 to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish a purchase order with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for landfill use by Division of Infrastructure Management in the Division of Traffic Management, to authorize the expenditure of $415,000 or so much thereof, as may be needed, from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Infrastructure Management is responsible for street cleaning in Columbus. Debris gathered as a result of street cleaning, brush clearing, and other street maintenance activities is dumped at the landfill operated by the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio. The Division of Traffic Management has a need to dispose of traffic installation debris resulting from the installation of new traffic poles at the landfill operated by Suaco. The city is required to use Suaco Waste Disposal Services due to an existing contractual relationship. This legislation authorizes the expenditure of up to $415,000 for tipping fees at Suaco's landfill. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed. And that's all I have this evening in environment. With Councilmember Tyson's absence, may I move on to Health and Human Services? Please. Tonight, I have ordinance number 368 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., DBA Primary One Health, to provide primary health care, home visiting, and dental services at community-based health centers, to authorize the expenditure of $4,299,110 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, and to declare an emergency. Since 1974, Columbus Public Health has provided primary health care services to the underserved through contracts with community-based health centers. Since 1998, Columbus Public Health has contracted with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, a not-for-profit corporation to provide primary health care services to medically injured patients at various neighborhood health centers. The ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center to provide primary health care, home visiting, and dental services at community-based health centers for a total amount of $4,299,110. For the period of January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, this ordinance waives competitive bidding provisions of the city code. Community health centers are successful, low-cost options for primary care access in a nation that spends $2 trillion a year on health care. Medical costs for CHC patients are 41% lower compared to patients seen elsewhere, such as a hospital emergency room. As a result, CHCs save the health care system between $9.9 billion and $17.6 billion a year. Are there any questions or comments from my colleague? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
And that's all we have this evening in Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any more business to come before council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Council is adjourned. We'll call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the Journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Manuel Remy will chair, and Chair Tyson's absent. All members serve on this committee. Councilmember Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance number 302020 to grant a variance from provisions of Sections 3353.03(c)(2) permitted uses and 3361.02(c)(p)(2) permitted uses of the Columbus City Code for the property located at 919 Old Henderson Road to permit multi-unit residential development in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Homport. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is approval, six to three. I would first like to make a motion that we take it from the table. It was originally tabled on February 10th, 2020.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Remove it from the table.
And then I'd like to move to table indefinitely. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Tabled.
Thank you very much. Next, I have ordinance number 383-2020 to rezone 5803 Chantry Drive, being 34.3 acres located on the south side of Chantry Drive, 880 feet west of Bryce Road, from C4 Commercial District and LC4 Limited Commercial District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is CI Ross LP. The proposed use is a warehousing, wholesaling, distribution, and commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Far East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, four to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Waived.
I move to amend as submitted to the clerk. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, I move for passage as amended. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy. President Harden.
Passed. That's all I have this evening in zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any further business to come before the zoning committee? Seeing none, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy.
Meeting is adjourned.